Welcome everyone to the Bradenton City Council Meeting Wednesday, January 8th, 2025 at 8:30 a.m. We are blessed to be here and starting out the 2025 year. And at this time, I'd like to have the invocation and the pledge. We'd call up Reverend Glenn Graciak, the rector with St. Mary's Episcopal Church. If you all please stand.
Thank you Mayor Brown. I'm Glenn Gracik from St. Mary's Episcopal Church. I'm the rector there in Palmetto. Thanks for having me and good morning. Let us pray. Loving and gracious Creator, giver of all that is good, as we begin this new year, we ask that you send down upon those who hold office in this city, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Bless this council with the spirit of wisdom to know what is best and fair to improve the lives of the people of Bradenton. Bless law enforcement with wisdom to make good decisions to keep both the officers and citizens safe and out of harm's way. Bless this council with the spirit of charity so that the poor and disenfranchised receive dignity. Give us generous hearts so that we may find the funds for additional mental health resources that the children in our schools need. And help us to recognize the undocumented and those labeled different and other as our neighbors and welcome them as contributing members to our community. Bless this council with the spirit of justice so that juvenile and adult first-time nonviolent offenders will be, while being held accountable, will be given a second chance and not be branded for life within arrest warrant. And let justice prevail and raise up all those who are oppressed, discriminated against, bullied, and innocent victims. I pray that the members of this council and all who work in and for the good of the city of Bradenton be blessed with a steadfast purpose to faithfully serve and to promote the well-being and common good for all people, to protect and sustain our democracy and to bring peace and safety to our homes and streets. We ask this in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Do you join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend. We appreciate it. All right, at this time we'll call the meeting to order. We do have a time sensitive that's at 10 a.m. So when we get to that point, we'll go back to that part of it and adjourn or actually recess for that if we're still going. So, Madam Clerk, any proclamations or presentations?
No sir.
All right, at this time we'll do citizen comment. Citizen comment will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda items, agenda items, future agenda items, or topics of relevance to the city council. Comments will be accepted on the public hearings at the appropriate time. So I only have two citizen comment forms filled out and I believe the first one is Patrick. And is it Panasik?
It is, thank you.
But sir, please come, state forward your name, your city of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Certainly. Patrick Panasik. My address is 109 23rd Street West, Bradenton. I'm here to discuss an issue of code enforcement and potential future actions. In earlier this year, earlier last year rather, I decided to move from Michigan where I was raised on a farm to the, this area of Florida and evaluating Sarasota, Bradenton, and other areas. We got various recommendations, some to move to Bradenton, some to not. We opted to, after we researched Bradenton, decided to invest and become a member of the community of Bradenton. Our home is at, again, 109 23rd Street, about two homes from the river and I think an area that most are familiar with. It is an area that has been flooded this past fall and so they tell me the first time in a long time, although that wasn't much comfort to us after that issue. In October, we had an issue with a neighbor and contacted the city of Bradenton on code enforcement and that's the keeping of chickens in the city of Bradenton. And again, I raised chickens on a farm, although that was an 80-acre farm and not a small city lot and certainly capable of raising them or hogs again if I need to. But we contacted the city in October. The city was very responsive on investigating the issue. First it started off with roosters crowing at all hours of the day and night. Apparently they were a little bit confused as to what time it was, followed by the placement of chickens about six or eight on that property. The property in question in 114 22nd Street is not a grassed area. It's not a courtyard. It's dirt. And as you know, properties go to properties with metal fences. So anything that happened during that timeframe when the flood came that was on that property was now on our property, was now in our pool and now affecting our animals as well, which are allowed under the code and ordinance of Bradenton. I've got a cold today, so I apologize for that. Hopefully it's not avian flu. I'm sure that's not the case. But I did want to come forward because there was some discussion and I know at least two city employees have been involved since October trying to rectify this issue. And I work in a number of different cities and counties in both Florida and other states and three months seems to be a long time to me. I think we're still at least another month out for any resolution, which seems to be extremely long period of time. But I do understand there's various protocols that need to take place. I would trust and hope that that process will follow through to alleviate...
Okay, thank you. So we don't comment during, when you're done, but we'll move on if you talk with planning, Robin or Greg.
We'll make one, once one addition.
We stick with the three minutes, sir. Thank you. Next is Karen Corbin. Please state your name and your city of residence.
Good morning. I am Karen Corbin from Realized Bradenton, the executive director. We are at 10:15, Manatee Avenue West in Bradenton. Good morning, everyone. I'm here today primarily to say thank you. Thank you to each and every one of you for everything you have done to support Realized Bradenton and for Winter Wonderland. I just wanted to share with you that Winter Wonderland was an amazing, successful event by all accounts and so many city workers, along with each and every one of you in the room today, were really, you know, responsible for how wonderful that event turned out. The police force was amazing and we did, you know, a great job of keeping everyone safe. It really turned out to be a wonderful evening. The mayor spoke. Thank you very much. Almost all of you were there that evening. Poor Pam was sick. I'm sorry. I also want to mention that it was a wonderful opportunity that evening for us to honor Mary Ann and her family for many, many years. As you know, it was the Barnaby family who started the Winter Wonderland and who ran it for years. And I cannot tell you what an honor it was for the Barnaby family to come to us, Realized Bradenton, and ask us to take it over. So I truly hope that we made you proud. We worked very hard. We have named the area, which is getting bigger every year, our carnival area, as the Barnaby Family Carnival and it will be that hopefully forever. So thank you all very much. I also want to share with you in front of you our sanctificate. It's just a small little show of appreciation for all that you do. I hope you like it. There's also a little invitation there. On January 18th, we will be having our kickoff to this brand-new event that we're bringing to Bradenton where we will be activating the River Walk for an entire day. We're very excited about it. The kickoff will be at the market on January 18th at 10 o'clock, 10:30, I'm sorry. I hope that all of you will come. More to come. I'll be talking to you about that in the next week or so. So thank you all so much. We appreciate you. Have a great day.
Thank you. At this time, I have no other comment cards, citizen comment cards. So does the council have any comments? They'd like to say anything? Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I know we had started discussing the idea of our ordinance allowing, you know, a few chickens and I think we kind of need to workshop it again and discuss it. I think a lot of, I mean, with, no one knows where the boundaries are between county and city and they're allowed in the county and not in the city. So I just think we need to workshop it and address it again.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, anything else? Ms. Barnaby?
I just want to let Realized Bradenton know that Mark and I were so honored and very proud that you included us and continue to include us in Winter Wonderland. And my son actually, you sent one of these to our son in England because he helped give you some information about snow mountains and that sort of thing and he was so excited. So, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that I heard from several merchants, businesses downtown, that they think it's, that was so inviting, family-friendly, as we always talk about. That's our gold on Main Street when we're doing things and it really was something that played into what we envisioned as going forward. And as we know, with the Barnaby family, if they wouldn't have started it, you know, tens of, twenties of years ago. I didn't want to say hundreds of years ago, but, but tens of twenties of years ago from that, if that's even a saying. But that it was important to continue that on, but it's also important to grow it and make it easier. And I think that the stress level that I saw on Vice Mayor Barnaby at that time was not there compared to the years past and she enjoyed it and did a great job from the logistical standpoint and was able to figure out the snow mountains, which the kids love. Because without those slides, it's, people missed it. But it worked perfectly and I, like I said, I heard from several of the businesses, even that night from emails saying, wow, you know, it's a great job, Realized Bradenton. And that's, I think, the purpose of what Realized Bradenton was started many, many years ago and we want to continue that positive growth. And safety is very important as we go forward and that's something that, you know, we're always going to be looking at that now, especially with what's happening around the country. And I know the market had a lot of things this weekend that our officers did a great job of continuing and we will continue that, just to make sure the public does know. So, thank you very much.
Anything else on citizen comment? Hearing none. We'll move to consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes ma'am.
I move to adopt the consent, or approve the consent agenda items A through E and G through S.
So A through E and G through S, so you want to just basically pull F?
F, T, and U.
Oh, F, T, and U. Okay. F, T, and U. Is there a second or is there...
I would like to pull, let's see, 9A. And, let's see, T.
Okay, so T is on Mrs. Moore's. So Mrs. Moore, will you accept the friendly...
Oh no, excuse me. I said that wrong. U.
She's already got U too.
Okay.
So...
Not T. I apologize.
Will you make a friendly amendment to pull F, T, U, and A?
Yes.
And a second by Ms. Coker?
Second.
Okay, all right. All in favor of approving consent agenda, except for F, T, U, and A? Say, start the vote in word one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Okay, that carries five to zero. All right, Ms. Moore?
Regarding item F, I would just, I thought it would be beneficial for Mr. Williams to give us a little synopsis of what we're actually doing since the numbers are a little larger and I think it would be beneficial for everyone to, in case there were any questions or ambiguities.
Sure, happy to. Thank you, Councilwoman. Basically, these are budget adjustments that cover various multi-year capital, sorry, multi-year capital, rookie mistake. Multi-year capital projects and vehicles that were approved and ordered in fiscal year '24 but were not received by September 30th. So in order to procure those and ensure that we get them in fiscal year '25, we essentially move the budgeted approved dollars from '24 to '25. And then on our multi-year capital projects, obviously they're going to cover many years, so we carry those funds over until that project is completed. And that's what these budget adjustments represent.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
T, Ms. Moore?
T. My question was regarding really how we got there with the increase in services and costs. So if maybe you, if Mr. Perry or Mr. Williams could kind of express what we're adding and why we're doing that.
Do you want me to take that one?
Sure.
Okay. So obviously we have Jacobs helping us at our water reclamation facility. They've done a great job. Unfortunately, we've run into some issues that we continue to have and work through. We found it beneficial, initially in that scope of the contract, we were going to add some additional operators, thinking that they could have a reciprocating license. Come to find out that that's not the case. So what that contract really represents is more of a not-to-exceed number. It actually, we're not going to have the additional, from what we can tell now, we're not going to have the additional operators. The operators that we have onsite now have been with us for roughly five months. We'd like to continue that service to help continue to improve the operation of the plant, incorporating, writing some of the SOPs, standard operating procedure manuals, continue to work with our chief operator, our deputy public works director, spending a lot of time there as well. So we found it beneficial to have Jacobs' expertise, continue to help us ensure that the operation of the plant, they're going to help, you know, is successful and they're going to help us with some of the capital items as well. So again, it's a not-to-exceed number, but we found that we're not going to really need to access all of those funds.
And they're covered by the, you feel confident that the operational support water reclamation budget is sufficient?
Correct. Yeah, that's an enterprise fund and yeah, it can cover it and I think it's worth investing those funds for the betterment of the future. Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
And also, oh, Mr. Perry, go ahead.
Thanks Mayor. Just in addition to what Mr. Williams outlined, which is pretty good as it relates to describing this bar, this budget adjustment request, you know, I don't think it's any secret that we underwent three storms that had overwhelmed our wastewater treatment facility capacity, typically designed to process somewhere between five and six, maybe seven million gallons a day. At times, having flows of 25 to 30 millions of gallons a day. One of the problems with that is that when the system fails to operate in what's called the mixed liquor-activated sludge type process, which is the type of plant it is, probably 75% of the plants out there are like that, you end up with a problem of dissolved solids is what they're called, DDOs. And one of the problems with that is that we continue to be in that mode to try to press out these solids. And we're continuing to have Jacobs help us with that. Just to give you some context on what that means is we're talking about, I think, 420 tons...
Per month, correct.
Per month of solids. And that's 12 truckloads a day that have to come out of that plant to make it start getting on balance. And so there's certain challenges that are related to the storm itself, the failure and deficiency as of the plant related to the storm volume. And we're going to have to continue to basically address that.
Yeah, and just to kind of cap that, so in having the meetings with Jacobs and constant reporting, you know, we have monthly testing that we do with the plant to ensure the operation is successful. Jacobs reported that this last month, the testing was the best they've ever seen. So the progress is definitely there. We've seen a lot of benefit of having their expertise. And this, like Mr. Perry said, it's, we're trying to get a quite of a large volume out of the plant to continue to make it healthy, so.
And you may ask why we have that volume aside from the storm itself. We have two what are called screw presses and that's basically what takes the DDOs and compacts them. And in order to take them to a landfill that's approved by a DEP, because you have to have a license actually at the landfill too, they have to be at a certain level of compaction and de-watered. And that's basically generally 16, 15 or 16%. And so with those screw presses being down, they're actually made in Germany. They were installed years ago. Mr. Williams and I spent many a day walking around the arbitage of it, up in catwalks and the like going, what is this? How does this work? And it's a, called a screw press. It's designed to basically de-water these solids. We put them after they're compacted at the right compensation level, concentration level. We cart them out to that with a hauler that's licensed as well. You may have heard me talk about that. We're talking about now having to do 12 trucks basically a day. That's a lot. Generally, we would use probably two.
Yeah, it's 12 a week.
Yeah, 12 a week, okay. Yeah, we'd use, we'd use two, I think. And so we're kind of overwhelmed with that. The screw presses themselves were built in Germany many, many years ago and it was where one was operational when, recently, and the other one was just kind of on the fritz. It wasn't working. So we had to bring in technicians to basically repair that. In the interim, we had what's called the belt press and we bought in this big thing about probably a quarter the size of this room that presses the solids a different way. And we had to pay for that too, which was very expensive to use that equipment in order to remove those solids. And so we have since been able to rebuild the screw press, one of them. We're in the process of rebuilding the second one.
Correct.
But these are things, as I've always said, that aren't mushroom patches that just popped up overnight. They were maintenance issues that should have been handled previously on a preventative maintenance scale. And so I know the mayor and I and everyone else at the department in public works that spent a lot of time out at that plant will continue to do that. And we see exactly what some of the results are of some of that lack of attention in the past.
Yeah, so I'll add a little bit to that. Obviously, they talked about the technical, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Coker.
Thank you. Before you, you don't look this way. No, just kidding. Just kidding. Just out of curiosity, you were saying that you were anticipating having additional Jacobs people here, but you don't have to now. Just roughly, how many of those employees are here? And I know we're responsible for their lodging and all that and travel and stuff. How many? I'm just curious.
So we currently have five. We were essentially budgeting for an additional five. But we're going to be, the five operators that we have that have been here, we're going to be good with those five. So we won't need the additional five.
And I know we work on them like they're 10, right?
Yes, we do. They're good people and they know exactly, they've taught us a lot. They've taught our operators a lot. Again, they're helping kind of set the future up so we don't have, you know, once we all are gone, retired or what have you, the next group that comes in can pick up where we left off and continue to make improvements to the plan. So they've been, they've been integral and very important in that process. And it's a culture change. You know, we're trying to change some of the mindsets of the operators, our chief operator. What are the expectations? And that's document, train, make sure that the next group that comes in, our new operators, our trainees, know exactly what they're supposed to do, why they're doing it, when they're going to do it. And that's, you don't, you don't change that ship, you know, overnight. Like I said, it's moving in a very positive direction. We're happy with a lot of the results that they have and we just see an additional term of having those five operators help us just be more additional, you know, more beneficial for the plant and for the city.
It's a massive undertaking and I think we're probably getting our money's worth out of them.
Absolutely, yeah. They work tirelessly, for sure.
Ms. Moore?
Do they provide any kind of product that we would be able to digest so that we have a better underst... You know, you're boots on the ground, but do they give us like a memo or a report about their work that we could kind of have an idea already of what they're doing and how it's going?
They do have some reporting. It's taken, and this is, you know, I don't want you to take this the wrong way, but it's taken Rob or Mr. Perry and I a long time to kind of digest what any of that means because a lot of it is a very variable, you know, if you change one thing, if you change Y, it's going to change X and some of the reasoning behind it. I mean, if you want to take a tour of the plant and talk with Jesse, who's their lead operator, that would be, I would suggest that. I mean, it's probably a good idea to see, you know, what they're going through, what they've improved on. There's some conditions of the plant that we're continuing to work through. So I think it'll give you a better idea and we're happy to set some of that up if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, I think I would like that. Thank you.
Wear boots though.
Just to answer that question, do they have any product? So the last meeting I had with Jesse White, I guess, I'm sorry, about two weeks ago and Irv was there. Jesse bought in three bags. They was a very dark substance that looked like ground down dirt. It wasn't. Yep. And what it is, is showing me basically what 20% de-watered looks like compared to what 50 and compared to like 8%. I was told not to touch it without gloves if I didn't have a hepatitis shot. It was in sealed bags, but that's the technical kind of, you know, aspect of what they're trying to do there. And the good news is, this plant's about two things, operations and the plant itself, the capacity of the plant, how the plant operates. And yesterday, for our legislative initiatives, we had a meeting with Ms. Clayback and Irv and some other folks about what we intend to ask for the legislature. And there's, we believe there's going to be a significant push towards resiliency and environmental resiliency. So we will probably be seeking a significant appropriations to do improvements to the plant that could give us an additional 8 million gallons per day capacity over a period of time. That's a lot compared to what we have. And it's onsite. The good news is, it's always difficult to try to, you know, do a second plant because who wants one of these in their backyard, right? And there's neighbors nearby or schools or anything else. The good news is we can contain most of our plant, all of it, quite frankly, on existing footprint. And so we're going to run that by you pretty quick. It wasn't until really late in the day yesterday. I think we were here until about 6 o'clock or so going over that plan. But it was fairly promising on the various improvements to the plant itself.
Mrs. Barnaby?
Just a word of advice, wear clothes to shoes.
I've got my boots.
Don't touch anything unless they tell you to. I remember when we had the take your daughter to work days, things that went on and I took my niece and we toured different parts of the city and I called Public Works and they said, oh, come over to the wastewater treatment plant. An hour and a half later, my niece and I knew more about solids and liquids and sludge than I think anybody wanted to. And it's very funny because she actually has told some of her, she's now 25 and somebody was complaining about the city and she's like, you have no idea what they do. You have no idea what the wastewater treatment plant does. And then she starts rattling this stuff off. So she obviously learned something. So I do encourage you to do it. Don't wear clothes that flap or move or anything. You don't want to get anything caught anywhere. Shoes, wear a ball cap.
Okay.
Don't eat with your fingers.
Thank you. Got you.
Okay, so I'm going to just kind of articulate on what Mr. Williams and Mr. Perry said, that this has been something that's been ongoing for several months after we had Debbie. And it really has articulated into a lot of time and effort by Mr. Perry and Mr. Williams as well as our public work staff. Some of the names have been mentioned where midnight, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning, when storms had passed and heavy flows are now 10 days later because it takes 10 days for some of our flows to get to that plant. So you would think, oh, it's over. Well, no, it's taken by the pump stations and, and as we've said in the past, I've learned a lot more about wastewater treatment and different things than ever thought I would. But one of the things that I've seen, and especially with Jacobs and others that Mr. Perry and I have met with for going forward on opportunities that will come to this council to have that opportunity to make a generational change at that plant. We don't know what that is yet, but there might be an opportunity to make that change. So the next group that's up here isn't talking about this. They're talking about, well, we ran into another storm, but we were able to sustain a little bit better. And that's why we've done the face it and fix it type scenarios that are out there. So it's a good thing. So it's a good thing, you know, and, and again, I don't think that, uh, the way we go with our consent agenda, I still think is right. Where then things can be pulled off and talked about. Because you see, if we went through every item like this, we'd be here for two days or more. So, but I, I'm, I'm very glad that this opportunity came up to talk about this because we do see it every day that are in-house full-time. But this is, this is the opportunity that this council will have to make a generational change. At what cost, we're gonna have to figure that out. And at what legislative priorities that we can get. You know, because if we can get the money legislatively, we can do it quicker. But, you know, I don't, again, and I've said this, we are not going to be able to tax or enterprise zone cost our way out of this. So, and then again, this is the face it and fix it. And one of the things I do wanna show that's up on Elmo now is there's been a lot of propaganda out there over the last several months about what's happened and what's going on. So if you look at the Suncoast Waterkeeper water quality test results from twelve, twenty-three, twenty-four, it's the last one that I know of. People talk about how our bay, our river, our areas are polluted because of what we have done with our wastewater and what we are releasing and, and did. But when you look, the, um, Palmetto Bridge area, the one before this was undetectable. This one is in the Manatee River. And if you look basically just in the river to a little bit to the right of what that form is where our outflow is. And, and it goes, flows past the Palmetto. As you know, the Manatee County Dam is way upriver there. And so when we saw the high levels, it was when there was billions of gallons of stormwater being released everywhere. And, um, talking with Dave Tomaska, which we've had come in many times from Sarasota Bay, this is being judged on the safe to swim water. Well, the river isn't really a swimming, like a beach. So, you know, we're being judged on a beach quality. And it's not even beach quality, but we're still within the beach quality levels in our river. So not to say that we ever want to continue releasing into the river, but we are facing it and we are fixing it. And when you look around for our waterways in Sarasota, Manatee County, it's impressive with everything that we've had over the last six months. And so face it and fix it. Continue to do with Jacobs right now, but be prepared for more to come over the next six months. And some decisions are gonna have to be made. So I just wanna show that, you know, we see the bad from some of the media and the propaganda media that's out there. But also let's look, they don't produce the good. They don't show you the good. They only show you the bad. I think that, you know, produce the news, don't make the news. And if anybody wants to, to call me on that, you know, I'm very accessible and any media outlets, I will talk with you. I talked with another group this past weekend, or past week, somebody we'd never heard of. And when I gave him all of the information that I know and what we're doing, he was like, wow, I don't even know if this is a story. You know, it was somebody, Suncoast News, so down in Sarasota. But, but again, produce, you know, print the news, don't make the news. And that's all I'm asking. But, you know, and this is an independent waterkeeper. Um, so great questions and be prepared over the next several months to get more information. So thank you. All right, Ms. Moore, you?
You, um, now that we're coming up to the year, I'm sorry?
Sir, did you want us to vote on that?
We didn't vote on F.
We didn't vote on?
Well, let's, can we get all of them or do we, let's just do all of them and then we'll vote them together? If that's okay.
We can, although I think that maybe you is gonna be, is gonna need some, a review with the attorney, I think.
All right, we'll go ahead and talk about you and then we'll talk about me and then we'll make the votes.
Okay. Um, for this one, I, um, I spoke a little bit with Mister Perry and with Mister Brutus Solomus Powers regarding, now that we're up at the, um, anniversary of this agreement, um, there are just some points that I would like to see clarified. And so if we're going to, uh, extend it, I'd like to see us include these items, um, in the extension. Um, specifically, I would like clarification about, um, I would like to have the contract address expenses of that the E D C incurs. Um, and that this is really like a point of conversation for everyone. Um, currently, I don't see that the contract really limits what kind of expenses or even just requires us to know or approve anything beyond a certain amount. Um, so currently, as written, the expenses could be anything. And then we also pay a five percent administration fee on top of that amount of the expense. And I'd just like to see caps, you know, so that we kind of know what we're getting and, and what we're potentially facing as far as cost. So there's that item. And then the second one was, I know that, um, that the E D C came last year and presented regarding deliverables that they expected to deliver. But I think it would be more appropriate if they were actually incorporated into the contract as far as obligations go. Um, so I would like to see that also included in the contract. And to the extent that there are gonna be some kind of studies or whatnot, when we're talking about deliverables, I would like clarification about the type and, and what exactly we're working on, I guess.
So would you like to table this until we have the?
Mister Perry, I'd like to hear Mister Perry's.
I had had the opportunity to speak with, uh, Councilor Gonzalez Moore and, and I think her points are well taken. Um, particularly in, in speaking with E D C, um, and, and what their plans are this year to move to a, um, a strategic consultant, basically, to look at opportunities for the city as would be best suited to promote economic development and, and more vibrancy. That's gonna be a fairly significant undertaking. So on top, what, what we have before us is just the extension, basically, of the contract. The predicate for the contract itself is not here. And we haven't had a chance to talk with that. I was hoping that, uh, that E D C might be here and, and, and sharing to maybe answer some of these questions. But I think tabling it may be a good approach.
All right, well, I think also one of the things is we would not go into a huge contract like that without it first coming back here. So that is not the intention of saying, oh, we're gonna go and then all of a sudden have them do a study for two hundred thousand dollars and do it without approval.
Right.
So that would be something, and that's something that we've talked with them about, that they would bring to us and present it and then show the deliverables on that, show what the cost is. And so none of that would be just automatic.
But that is not contained in the original contract. And I think that that pre-approval and submission of a proposal would be a good approach. Right, for sure.
So I have no problem tabling that or, or taking that and extending it to maybe even having a presentation from the E D C with what they think a cost factor would be. Because then we could say, okay, yes. But, and then what is also gonna be our outcome? And how long will that outcome take and what will be done? So, um.
If I could.
Yep.
Um, and, and regarding that, cause I, when I'm, when I'm thinking about deliverables and what they're gonna do, um, and I love the idea of having them present and then we kind of move forward just so that we have an opportunity also to discuss. Um, one of the other reasons why I wanted to discuss it was because I, to me, economic development is a little bit of a, of a general phrase. And, and I know that, I know I have pretty specific, uh, thoughts on, on what I'd like to see downtown work towards and how we get there and, you know, supporting surrounding areas of downtown and whatnot. And so I would like to know what, you know, cause my specific idea about what downtown eventually becomes and how we get there could be completely different from what you all are expecting. So before she goes to the time and effort of, um, of presenting anything, I think it would be a good idea for her to know what we want in the way of economic development, other than this general, we want downtown to be vibrant.
I just would suggest that, you know, it's always one of these things with the, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? And I understand that five.
Let's not talk about chickens now.
Right, right, sorry to go back there. Um, but, but five different council wards may have different interests for sure. Um, at the same time, I think that part of their job is to try to look at it and say, what would be viable as an expert? And, and integrate that in too, obviously, the, the council from that ward, as well as the council as a whole in approach. But, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg, I guess, yeah. Sorry, but.
Yeah, so I think one of the things, and then I'll go to Councilwoman Coker, cause she had this also. But one of the things that I think we really need to look at as a council and as we move forward administration is there were some things done in this community twenty, thirty years ago. And they sat for twenty and thirty years of nothing. So we basically set up a program in East Bradenton. It was set up with the front porch, all that. And, you know, whether you agreed with or not, the change that we made over there for development for twenty years, that didn't work. So we need to look at the people that are in the process of doing things and knowing what's happening and get their ideas, show our ideas, and then obviously try to mar- marry them and go forward. But, uh, we're at the point now where I think really the goal for us is to set things up that can happen quickly. Not, you know, just one person's, but quickly in a way that can get heads in beds, things that are done. We're gonna see some opportunity really soon to have several hundred more people downtown because of places that are opening up. And we're not prepared for that from a, a retail type standpoint, if we wanna keep people here. And I heard something yesterday, day before, from an individual that said, you know, well, we don't have a grocery store. Yeah, but if a grocery store thought they could be viable downtown, they would be here. They don't think they can be viable yet because it doesn't hit the numbers. So some of those things, you know, we've gotta do. But no, I, I don't disagree with that. I'm, I'm all about metrics and, and making sure that they're saying timelines and how quick. You know, and, and again, but not to set us up to say, okay, we're gonna do this and twenty years later, they're still looking at it cause it didn't work. So, Ms. Coker?
Well, I would say that, um, Councilwoman Moore covered pretty much exactly what I was thinking about. But, um, the, when you say that the grocery stores aren't coming because there aren't enough heads in beds and that's where I view, you know, something where the E D C might be able, they don't know how much we've got here, I think. And I think if we could package ourselves a little bit better and say, hey, we've got so many here, we got so many coming, cause we know we have several projects that are in the ground and at various stages. And that's, to me, that is part of economic development is preparing yourself, basically marketing yourself to those people that wanna come here. But, um, anyhow, but I.
Grocery stores, I'll disagree with you on something with the grocery stores. They know. Because when they're building three Publixes within a quarter of a mile of each other, they know. And, you know, so they do their market studies. Because if they could make their market and hit their target, they're gonna come in and try to find a place and, and do it. So, and that's in talking with some of them, you know, they're not gonna put it where it's gonna fail. And literally out on seventy, they're building three Publixes within less than a mile of each other because they know that they're gonna hit their three targets, you know. And so again, I'm, I'm gonna say disagree, I'm not disagreeing. The economic development can come in and say, all right, let's do this, this and this. And then also hold them to task. So I agree with that.
May I? Just to, oh, if I could just finish, if I could just finish, I, I would support tabling it.
And I would just like to remind the council that the CRA board has discussed this. And we have met, uh, in our, in our meeting with our director. And we've talked about bringing someone, another consultant in to talk specifically about CRA areas. But that information should be able to, you know, like mushroom out as well. So we, you know, hopefully we can get all these hands on deck and we can really get something going.
My, um, my, just to round out the conversation about the grocer, um, the, the little bit of research I've been doing on that indicates that while I agree that they have a market, um, that they're trying to hit, but to the point about having like three within a mile radius, the, um, the research I've been doing shows that there's also other things that they're, they're weighing against the heads in beds thing. And it's things like for, I mean, using the three within a mile radius. Because I also drove out to Parrish recently and was really actually annoyed that, at how I was like, there's a Publix, there's a Publix, there's a Publix. And then later, when I did the research, I found out that it's weird things. Like the reason why there might be three in a mile radius is because they have, uh, they're considering also the sales of things like cold goods. And so it's easier for them to have cold goods spread out over that mile so that nothing is rotting on the shelf instead of packing the shelf really super tightly and hoping that they get the volume that will kind of deplete it. Um, it's also things like traffic patterns, um, and where people are, where, you know, and, and light signals so that people can get into the parking lot. Um, and so I wanna, I, my thought is, uh, in my conversations with the E D C, I would like to tell them, this is my idea, this is what I want. Can you go figure out how we get it? What do we need to do to get the things that we want? And I, and that's why I raise these kind of things because I'm, I know what I want. But I also wanna know what everyone wants. Because I think there's a way to marry all the, all the ideas and desires, you know. I think we, we are a collaborative group.
So I just want everyone to think about, and I've been up here the longest on this part of it, is with the grocery store that we were trying to put on Thirteenth Avenue, with the grocery store that was on Martin Luther King and that we're trying to make it, it was always subsidized. And I don't believe that, I would not be for subsidizing a grocery store at any point. And that's, you know, CRA sometimes helps with facade and different things like that. But to say, okay, if you don't, if you fail, where is it? And, and what we've learned recently from Publix, it's, it is about their staffing, it's about the product, it's about that. But they have a target number. And if that target number goes above three hundred thousand and it's six hundred thousand, they know they've got a market, cause they wanna be a target of three hundred thousand each store per day. So again, if they thought they could get three hundred thousand downtown, they'd be downtown. And that's what, that's what their executives told me. They don't believe they can hit that target yet, um, for them.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so that's, that's something that, that, believe me, they, but if all of a sudden there's enough heads in beds, you know, and they can get it, that's gonna happen. So, yeah, so we've talked about that. Let's go to A with Ms. Coker, then we'll go through the, the different motions and positions.
Oh, hang on, let me get back to that. Oh, that was the ship. Um, and I've kind of been, um, pushing a little bit for this, for a little while. I think when we have these ship, um, grants, that I would like to have at least the bids or I, I would like a little more meat on the bones under what we're, um, doing, if possible. Um, a description of what the work that's being done. Um, I just, I just feel like I need more, a little bit more. This is a great program and I wanna make sure we're getting the most bang out of the buck. And, um, so if, if possible, I would request that, you know, if there's this, I think they go through a bidding process. If we could have a copy of the winning bid that just, you know, identifies what work's gonna be done, something like that. Um, I don't know if there's a problem with that or how the best way to do. I just don't feel like I get a lot of information.
I'm getting a head shake that that can be done. So are you comfortable approving this now with the, that caveat, having more information for the future?
Um, I mean, is it possible to get a little bit of a description about what's gonna be done with this?
For now, yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Skelding can come forward and give that.
Morning, everyone. Ms. Skelding, Housing and Community Development Manager. Um, for this property, it is actually at twenty-two nineteen Twenty-Fourth Avenue West. Um, there were two bids because the scope of work is separated out to the type of contractor that can do the work. Um, the foundation work through Foundation Services is gonna cost eleven thousand, three seventy-five. The second contractor, One Coast Construction, they're gonna be doing the rehabilitation part of the project. And it's gonna include replacing cast iron plumbing. It's also going to resealing stair cracks on the exterior. And they're also doing work in the kitchen and bath repairs. And that work is gonna cost forty-five thousand, um, twelve dollars for a total expense for that property of fifty-six thousand, three eighty-seven. For rehab projects, we can go up to a hundred thousand. So this is just a little over fifty percent of the strategy expense that we're allowed to award.
Okay. And I'm assuming that all that FEMA, that we're not exceeding, the FEMA appraisal and all that, okay.
This is the rehab strategy, so they're not involved with the disaster assistance strategy.
Well, okay. Um, yeah, but if you've got a property that, I mean, sometimes the value of the property isn't worth what we're.
Exactly. We do, we do take that into consideration of whether or not someone is eligible. That and the main eligibility requirement is income. That, and the main eligibility requirement is income for these. But we do take that into consideration as well. Depending on how much the repair's gonna cost versus the value.
Okay.
And we will make sure we include that in the future.
Okay, and-
Mr. Perry had a comment, and then-
Okay.
Just briefly, aside from the specifics of the project, um, this being a fifty-six thousand dollar project, including both the foundation work and ultimately, construction interior remodel, um, I, I think there also should be some additional information regarding how many, um, applications you'd received that year and what the eligible amount is. Because I know we're very restricted on that. We put our work plan in, um, that's pursuant to the guidelines that, for the Fed and, and, and for the, for the grant itself. And, um, then we basically do the public advertising, from what I understand. And, you know, whether the public really knows what's out there and, and, and doesn't, I guess, that's a hard thing to measure, right? But ultimately, someone comes up and says, one way or the other, "I wanna apply for this income-based grant for improvement to my home." And you end up spending fifty-six of the, maybe th- th- three hundred thousand dollars that might be available on the thing. And you go, "Well, we were able to do six homes that year." I think council would be well-suited if they understood a little bit more about what, what the total available funding was on an annualized basis, how many applicants you had, how you competitively make decisions if it's competitive, and that type of data as well. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, we wanna service as many people as we can, I would imagine, that fits these categories. And sometimes, when you look at a home of fifty-six thousand dollars for improvement, and you know that neighborhood and say, "Well, the home's value is probably not a whole lot." You know, is it a smart thing? And, and, and we're, we're using, you know, other folks' money, OPM, right, other people's money. Uh, so, so I get that part of it. But, I, I, I think it has to make sense to council, basically, both from the macro picture as well as the micro picture on the project itself. It, it, it makes them, uh, it makes it more palatable, sensible to them.
Well, and if I could, um, also, I mean, ship funds, if I'm not mistaken, can be used as down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers. And at a time when we're seeing, we're having so much pressure on affordability and, you know, people being able to be, to get into a home, be, do the homeownership, the one thing that can create, you know, generational wealth for, for these, for the next generation. And actually, you can be a first-time homebuyer, even, doesn't depend on your age, if you haven't owned a home in a certain amount of time. So, if you've gone through bankruptcy and you've had to be a renter for so much of time, you can be considered for down payment assistance to get yourself back into homeownership. So, I wanna make sure that, I mean, if the funds were available, I'd really like to see it. It's been a while since the city has offered down payment assistance. And I, I'd like to see us get back to that. I think what we're doing is great, but I'd almost like to see us set some of that aside for that as well. So, I don't know where that discussion comes, doesn't have anything to do with this one. Um, but I just wanna have that discussion.
Ms. Coachman?
Thank you. I've had the opportunity to watch one of these cases go from zero to near completion right now. And it was a long process, and it involved a lot of information and a lot of consideration. And from what I know, doing these, getting these bids and doing these home restorations and, and assisting in, um, um, rent, and I, I think we've started doing that more now in the last year or two than we have. So, you're absolutely right. It, 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 it's definitely moving in that direction, that we're really using those funds appropriately, I think. Or make, getting the bang for our buck, at least.
Right.
So, I just wanna say, I appreciate you in all that you do, because I don't think we were doing that a couple of years ago.
I think we are definitely getting inquiries about some of our other strategies. As I look through the history, a lot of it was just rehabilitation. Now, we're getting more with, um, mortgage assistance to prevent people from being foreclosed upon. And we're doing, and our first of the demolition rebuild. Um, so we are really starting to get the word out there and let people know what strategies we're working with and how we can help. And I'm, I'm seeing a lot more activity with other strategies than just the rehab, which is good.
And I appreciate, uh, what Mr. Perry was saying. You know, getting the word out, that's definitely something across the board.
Right, and we did, we did do an ad in the utility bill, and we got a phenomenal response to that, to put that in, to try to get the word out. We also, um, did a video that went up on YouTube about the different programs. Um, but I think the biggest response we've gotten is from the, the advertisement in the utility bill. We got a lot of phone calls, so it's good to get the word out. Now, just get that in a few more extra times, maybe quarterly, to kind of, um, initiate more interest.
Well, we look forward to more.
Thank you.
Okay, and I will make sure and make note of the additional information that will be helpful to everyone, so thank you for that.
Ms. Moore that wants a comment?
Right, I was just gonna say, uh, to Mr. Perry's comment, um, the, my last meeting with the, um, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, this has been a focus. Um, Ms., uh, Councilwoman Coker was also in attendance, 'cause we're overlapping, and now I'm rolling off. Um, and that has been a focus of that advisory committee, uh, as far as in agreement with your sentiment. What's the best way to have people actually look at, see what, what's going on? What, what do we have, what have we used? Even down to where the location, um, what wards are, are taking advantage of the, of the programs and whatnot. Um, and so, I don't know, I mean, maybe it's a, maybe when you guys are meeting, you could share the, the graphs and things that you're working on, just for informational purposes.
Exactly, we have updated those from input from the last meeting, and those will be shared next week at our next, um, Affordable Housing meeting.
Great.
So, yes, we're definitely breaking it down to wards, trying to break it down to zip codes, what the strategies are that interest has been shown in, so we are definitely working in that direction.
Okay, thank you. So, um-
Thank you.
Mrs. Coker, would you like to make a motion to approve A?
Yes, motion to approve the fifty-six, three eighty-seven in ship funding for loan, for loan.
Resolution number twenty-five seventeen.
Yeah.
Oh. Second.
It just says the action, okay.
And, all right, we've had plenty, Ms. Coachman seconded it. Coker was the motion maker, so we've got, um, vote, start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two. Five.
Yeah.
I skipped all around there. Missed five, carried five to zero. All right, Ms. Moore, would you like to make a motion on F and T?
Yes, I move to approve, oops, um, F is, uh, Budget Adjustment, BA twenty-five oh one, and Amendment Number, oh, to approve Budget Adjustment. I've lost the number again.
F?
BA twenty-five oh two, or, I'm sorry, oh, one. And Amendment Number Three to Agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., for Operations Management and Facilities Contract.
Second.
Okay, we've had discussion, we'll start the vote in Ward Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two, so it carries five to zero. Thank you. And then, um, do, on a consent agenda, do we, do we table that, or do we just push it for further information?
You can table it.
Okay.
I mean, it'll, it's kinda all one in the same.
To more, to come back, either, you know, get more information, to come back in a future date.
Yeah, the only thing, Mayor, if I may, that I'd like to point out is the current contract does expire tomorrow. Um, and that's okay, we've, we've done extensions where there's been a little bit of a lapse. But, um, understanding what council is asking from the EDC, it may be that a new contract is just done, um, to include all of the additional information that's being requested. I mean, I'm not saying that has to happen, but I just wanna point out that it's set to expire tomorrow. So, depending on timing, we'll try to do an extension, or it may come back as a new contract if, um, we need to do it that way.
Okay, all right, so, um, do we have to vote on the table?
Yes.
Yeah, and just point of clarification that Marissa may or may not be able to answer. In order to take it off the table, does it have to be bought off the table by the person that made the motion to table it, do you know? So, Robert, Robert's Rules of Order thing, I think it does.
I think it does, too.
So-
We don't need an answer to it unless you know.
I don't know, sorry.
Yep.
I, I don't mind. But I mean, to be safe, Councilwoman Moore, if you will just, you can make the motion to table.
I move to table, uh, Consent Agenda Item AU, First Extension of the Contract Between the City of Bradenton and Bradenton Area Economic Development Corporation.
Are you tabling it to a time certain, or a specific date, or ninety days?
I think it should be soon.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Is that sufficient for the attorneys that are, I mean, it would be sufficient for us, I don't know if it's, if you, it's really up to the EDC, 'cause we're gonna have to obviously talk about points with them, see if they're able to come to the meeting to do the presentation, so.
Okay.
Um, legal side, yes, we're fine with that.
Okay, I will please table it to our next city council meeting.
And that date is, Madam Clerk?
January twenty-second, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Is her second?
Second.
All right. Start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
At this time, I'll administer the oath. Anyone wishing to address city council during the following public hearing will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council, and Happy New Year.
Good morning, Happy New Year.
I will do a quick introduction, and I'm gonna turn this case over. I'm Greg DeLong, Assistant Director, Planning and Community Development. You have in front of you today Resolution twenty-five dash oh one, which is a special use case, SUP dot twenty-four dot zero 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 one. You may be wondering why that numbering looks so strange, but that is because of our new Acela software. So, you're gonna see some odd numbers for the next few months coming through. Um, this is a special use request to permit a sidewalk cafe with alcoholic beverages at four twenty-four, Twelfth Street West. Um, Mr. Jim Miller is the agent, and this is Cork Cigar Bar. He is here today with his daughter Megan, and I'm gonna turn it over to them to talk a little bit about their project and what they're proposing to do. Um, this is another one that we're just really re-upping, um, the conditions that are going on over there. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Miller right now.
Good morning, if you could please state your name to the record.
Good morning, Jim Miller, four two four, Twelfth Street West.
Thank you, welcome.
And we're here to renew our cafe license we've had for probably seventeen years. We've been in business seventeen years, but I like, everybody on the street has to do it now, which makes sense to me. Thank you, Jean, for pushing us to do that, and city council. Does anybody have any questions of me? It's, we operate this, we've been operating the same way we have, uh, served out front. We've got tables, uh, and we kinda police our own stuff. We gotta make sure everything goes according to the city's ordinances, which we do. Been doing it for a long time, and we'd like to continue to do it.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barnaby?
Mr. Mil, and I'm sorry, my mic is not working right now, so.
Put it on his, maybe it'll work.
Hey, I was a cheerleader in high school and college, if you can't hear me, you, you really need to see your audiologist, usually.
Sounds like my wife.
So, my question is, and this may be a question for, for Public Works, you're requesting to allow the furniture to remain on the sidewalk when the building is closed. Are you currently doing that?
We've been doing it for a long time, and we lock it up at night, so nobody can take it.
Right, and so, when our Public Works crews come in to do the cleaning that they do early in the morning, we haven't had a problem with being able to clean in front of your property, and you're happy with what we're doing, and your furniture is fine?
Absolutely, nobody's, I mean, I see the guys in the morning on the way to work, I wave to them. They're doing a good job.
Great, glad to hear it, that's all I needed to know.
You, you're welcome.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, as previously mentioned, this is for a sidewalk cafe. I'm not gonna run through the previous slides, they're just maps. Um, this is in the downtown area. But, um, as Mr. Miller stated, he is requesting to, uh, re-keep, um, the furniture outside, which is, which are six ta- uh, tables, ten chairs, and seven stadium-type seats out there. Um, they have no busing or hostess stations out there. And again, this would be a stipulation for approval if you do decide to allow for him to keep the furniture out there. Um, the size of the area is about ten feet by twenty-five feet in width. Here are photos, actually, to help you out, Mary Ann, um, our Councilwoman, um, Barnaby, with the, uh, the furniture and how it's locked up at night, and it is pushed up against the building, so. And here is how it looks during the daytime, when the business is open. And this PowerPoint presentation was, um, submitted with the, uh, with the Organicus Semilla. I'm hoping that helps you guys out, um, in preparing for these meetings. Um, sidewalk cafes in the land use, or, I'll go back a little bit here. Um, this is a definition of a sidewalk cafe. A sidewalk cafe is a establishment where food and beverage is served from an adjacent cafe or restaurant, um, where it is, has alcohol outside. Or if it does have alcohol outside, it kicks it to a, um, uh, special use according to our land use regulations. Because sidewalk cafes without alcohol, um, with under twenty seats are permitted use in the T four oh, T five, T six districts, which are primarily downtown area. Um, again, if this is approved, um, you know, they will have to make sure they have all their licenses, we'll make sure they have their indemnification agreement complete. Um, and again, everything will be in compliance, and Mr. Miller's done a great job in doing that over the, the course of time, so we do appreciate that. Our comprehensive plan does encourage these types of uses in the downtown area. Um, I do have that underlined under, uh, Policy one point one point one, number two. Um, it also talks about making sure, um, the sidewalk designs maintain a clear five-foot width um, for, uh, traversable space, which they are proposing to also do. This is out of the land use regulations, it just talks a little bit about sidewalk cafes, and really, where it kicks it into the special use process, and, um, which brings it in front of city council. Um, it talks about, you know, maintaining the seats, keeping the sidewalks clean, um, everything else, which they will be required to do, and which they have been doing over the course of the past seventeen years. Um, here's some more information under that, under maintenance. Here's the indemnification agreement under four point three point eleven point three, um, which we'll get that taken care of after this, uh, meeting today. And then, here's just some more items related to the land use regulations for what identifies a sidewalk cafe with alcoholic beverage sales. Um, special use, section three point three point one in the land use regs. It appears all of these are met, these were in the staff report, there was responses to them. Um, you know, some of these can be met. I would say three point three point one point two's a little difficult in the downtown area, since it is a built environment, to add a requirement for a ten-foot width, um, as a buffer. That's a little difficult, since we do have that built environment. But for new developments, that would be a requirement for them. There are criteria to be reviewed under the land use regulations under three point three point two. Again, they were listed here in the presentation. Um, the staff reviewed them, it looks like everything was, was met. Um, and then there are some questions that needed to be answered under three point three point two point five. And the applicant did respond to all of those, staff did. And in summary, um, for this case, um, city council is encouraged to evaluate through requests based on provided criteria, as well as input from staff, the applicant, and the public. As you can see today, right now, we have, um, I don't believe there's anyone in the public here for it. Um, it is in staff's opinion that this request is found to be consistent with the intent of the land use regulations, three point three point two point five, and also the design element of the comprehensive plan. Um, Planning Commission did meet back on December eleventh of twenty twenty-four. They did recommend approval. They did add some stipulations to it, which were recommended by staff. Um, the vote was five zero. I can run through all of these, um, if you want me to, but it's primarily the same things we've been seeing on all of them. Um, there is the stipulation on the six chairs, or six tables, ten chairs, and seven stadium seats to remain outside. Um, you know, keeping the sidewalk clear at least five feet of traversable space, um, that meets ADA requirements, um, that they'll get their indemnification agreement, that they'll post their site plan, um, that they have all their licenses, these are some, somewhat of a reminder for them. If they do use any cleaning solutions beyond what the city is doing for cleaning the sidewalks in the downtown area, that those, uh, solutions are approved by our Public Works Department. And if there is any increase in the seating capacity outside, that we will have to bring it back in front of city council for review. And that is what I have for you.
Questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the public hearing. Chair will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, huh? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair, want to entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kramer.
Move to approve Resolution twenty-five dash oh one with stipulations recommended by staff.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Kramer, and I heard Ms. Barnaby with my good right ear. Uh, first.
I don't know if I like this side.
I can't, I don't know. So, we have a motion and second, we've had discussion, anything else? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Carries five to zero, thank you. Carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to give a quick update on all of these sidewalk cafes. We are working diligently with these property owners to get them into compliance. With this approval today, we have six that are complete now. That puts us at six in the process. We did recite five applications on December thirtieth. Unfortunately, they were incomplete, so we're working with those property owners to get their applications complete, to start through the process. And we have four that are still outstanding. We're gonna do another sweep through the downtown area, just to verify everyone's still doing what they need to do, and that they are not serving alcohol, because we are hearing some people are now starting to serve alcohol that originally weren't. So, we need to just verify everything. So, we're in a good spot right now.
We'd like this to be done
Yeah.
within the first quarter of this year.
We, that's our goal, is to get it done. Yeah, so we're actively working on it, and I think we're in a good position right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving forward, Madam Clerk?
Item ten B is the second reading in public hearing for Ordinance four zero five five, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, repealing Chapter thirty, Section thirty dash twelve of the Code of Ordinances, relating to inspection of certifications and returns by the city council and declaration of election results, providing for codification, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right, so any comments we need to have on this, Mr. Perry?
Yes. Is that okay? Just wanna make sure. Can I comment?
Yeah, I didn't know if there was any staff comment.
Oh, do you wanna do that first?
Is there anything the staff needs to say? I don't think so, but just to make sure. Okay, now counsel.
Well, I just, um, in general, don't like amending charters willy-nilly, and I don't know that I have a great feeling as why we're doing this, and why were we originally required to do it, and I just don't like, I just don't like revising the charter so, so
Mrs. Martin.
without more contemplation.
I'm sorry, this is not changing the charter. This is changing our Code of Ordinances. A charter change would need to go before voters.
Okay.
So, this is only taking out the rec, or the requirement that we meet at noon the day after the elections are certified by the canvassing board.
Because if people were out of town, different timings, different things, falling on weekends, falling during hurricanes, so it's just given the opportunity to meet and to certify, because the supervisor of elections could take one day or twenty days, depending on vote counts, and then we're on, if it happened and they clarified it, we could have to go on a Sunday at noon, and we're just trying to make it a little bit cleaner.
Okay.
If I may?
Yes.
Um, I believe at one point, possibly, the city did handle their own elections, and this is likely a holdover provision from when the city did, but now we do not, and we rely on the supervisor of elections. So, just to echo what Mayor said, it's really, it's almost, it's more burdensome at this point in time, because we are at the mercy of the supervisor of elections, and then this requires us to do this date certain time, certain next day type situation, where the supervisor of elections certifies, they, they announce. So, um, that's why it was, I believe, originally in there.
Okay, thank you.
But just to clean up, so if we don't do exactly at twelve o'clock the next day, we're, you know, we're set for a policy to, to meet the board's availability, within a couple of days anyway, it's the right, you know, soon.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, it is not as if we need, after the board of, of, the supervisor of elections meets, the canvassing board meets, it's not like we can say, "We don't agree with their results, and we're not gonna accept it." This, I think, I think Ms. Powers is actually correct. This, the city of Bradenton used to hold their own elections. They used to count their own ballots. This was just something that was in there, and I, I see it now more of a ceremonial thing, but as our elections have gotten more complex and longer, and it takes longer for the canvassing board to be able to certify them, and for us to have to be that nimble to get everybody back here the next day by noon, and as you remember with what's happened with the storms and things, sometimes that's not the easiest thing to do, and I don't think any of us wanna be in violation of an ordinance that is primarily ceremonial.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So, is that a motion to approve, Ms. Cochrane?
Certainly is.
Second?
Mr. Mayor, we have a public hearing.
We do have a public hearing. Chair will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to, oh gosh.
Ordinance forty fifty-five.
To approve ordinance forty fifty-five.
Second.
All right, we've had discussion. We'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Madam Clerk?
Item ten C is the second reading in public hearing for Ordinance four zero five six, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter fifty-four, Article one, Section fifty-four dash twelve of the city's Code of Ordinances, relating to unlawful lodging out of doors, revising definitions, amending procedures for relocation and enforcement, providing for enforcement mechanisms, providing for codification, providing for repeal of ordinance and ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, is there staff that's to talk about this?
I could, uh, talk about it, Mr. Mayor. This is, uh, this is an ordinance that we prepared, um, in response to the recent legislation regarding public camping, and essentially it just aligns our verbiage with the language from the new statute.
And it'll be something that will flow into with what we're working with the county on lodging that they're doing through the women's shelter that the county's working on, Salvation Army, the, um, Fresh Start Manatee, I believe it is, that they're doing. So, the ordinance that's out there that we have to do, until some of that stuff is done, we can't. We can start working with them, but we gotta find lodging for them.
Right, this, so this provides for the potential for the county to provide a, a place, and then that would be recognized in the ordinance.
And right now, we have beds at Salvation Army, but unfortunately, they fill up quick.
Yes.
The, the future will, will have multitude of beds where they could do it. So, 'cause I have people that are calling me and saying, "Why aren't we enforcing it?", and some of that, and we're going to be, you know, working towards that, but it's also working towards a, you know, you have a place to go. If you don't want that place to go, then here's your second option, here's your third option, and first option is to get them help, and that's what all of us wanna do. So, all right, so any questions by counsel before we go to public hearing?
I think I have a question. Um, how does this apply to, um, individuals that are literally living on the streets and have been for years, and they have their big grocery carts full and all of that, and they land at some place, and, you know, we can only say, you know, move to, move around the corner or whatever, but.
It will affect, I think, giving them the opportunity to, to go to a shelter area, once it's, they're available, or option B, maybe jail, or option C, maybe, be, uh, you know, we'll send a ticket, or maybe option B would be, you know, we'll get you a place to go with your family, and then the ultimate option would be, you can't stay here. And that's, that's state statute now, that's.
I know, but there's still no designated area for.
Oh, they're gonna have a designated area. That'll be at the.
I have it in jail.
No, no, it's not jail. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a facility like Pinellas Hope, or things like that. So, they're gonna have to make a decision, you know, and, and obviously, the first two will be positive decisions. The other will be, you know, you can't keep, you know, that. And again, it's not, that's where Dr. Marbut came in, has done studies. The county's extensively done it. They talked about it yesterday. Sheriff Wells talked about it. And, you know, we hope it's within months to give people opportunity to succeed.
I, I have a few, um, situations where people are beginning to call me a lot.
There?
I just don't know what to do.
If I could just maybe comment on that briefly. If you look under Section two, subsection D, that basically highlights the, the options that the police officer has, um, in enforcing the ordinance as it relates to finding a probable cause, and ultimately disposition. Within that subsection D, combined with subsection F, is a provision on personal property. So, if you, you know, it's common when we're dealing with homeless people that they have their personal belongings either in a shopping cart or otherwise. The short version of this ordinance is it basically requires the police officers to inventory it for the benefit of that individual. It creates what's called a bailment in law, and there's a sixty-day period where it would have to be claimed by. So, just, that kind of addresses the specifics of your question. I hope that's helpful.
And I read, I did read that, and I understood that. I just kinda wanted to know, well, where's this designated area that they're going, and where's the area that their belongings are going to be stored? That was really my question.
And my envision of it, and maybe Paul can help a little bit with the police department part, but I envision it's gonna go with them, for the most part, unless it's.
Sometimes it's, like, really packed. Uh, two, this one gentleman has two grocery carts. I mean, he's got it packed strategically, though, and it doesn't fall out or anything, but.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes, uh, as far as, uh, what you said, Mayor's correct. It depends on the volume of what they have. If it's, you know, not a lot, then we, you know, we, we can help with that. But we also partner with the Salvation Army to take care of the large quantities of belongings. And they have, basically, we worked with the, the city to get some, um, the, the bins that are used, uh,
Yeah.
that people put their garbage and their recyclables in, and we put locks on them, and we have those at Salvation Army that officers have keys to, and they have keys to, so we can store some of their property there, and.
In, in my area, I can think of two. There are more, but there are at least two gentlemen. They have a lot. Just worried about their belongings and where it would be, but.
Right.
All right, so we've had discussion. We'll go to the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve ordinance forty fifty-six.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Kramer, and a second by Ms. Barnaby to approve ordinance forty fifty-six. We'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Madam Clerk?
Item ten D is the second reading in public hearing for Ordinance four zero five seven, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Part one, Charter and Related Laws, Subpart B, Related Laws, Article four, Police Officers Retirement System of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Section twenty-six, Deferred Retirement Option Plan, providing for severability of provisions, providing for codification, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak on this? This is the, the drop.
Uh, y- yes, Mayor, this is the, uh, the collective bargaining agreement negotiations that took place, and first reading, we, we discussed that the ordinance needed to be changed, and this would just codify the, uh, agreement.
Any comments, Mr. Rudicell, before we go to the public hearing? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Close the public hearing. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kramer.
Move to approve ordinance forty fifty-seven.
Second.
Ms. Coachman. All right, any other comments? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One. Two.
Yes.
Approved five to zero. At this time, we're going to, uh, recess and, um, going to, now, what do we have to read? Mr. Rudicell, do you have to read something to go into our?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, first, first, we're gonna have Ms. Dyson come down.
Good afternoon. Thank you for recognizing me. I'm Sasha Dyson. I represent, along with my partner Greg Haring, the city of Bradenton in a lawsuit that's been filed by the police union, the PBA, and we request a session with counsel because we need advice related to this litigation.
Okay, do we have to read anything else, or that's?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you need to read the, I, I would just go ahead and read the agenda item, because you're required to read the names of all the people that will be attending the, the session, as well as the, um, estimated time of the session, so.
Do I have to read it?
Yes, you do, sir.
All right, notice hereby given pursuant to Florida statutes, Section two eight six point zero zero one, parenth eight, that the City Council for the city of Bradenton, Florida, will hold a closed attorney-client session to discuss settlement negotiations and strategy related to litigation expenditures with regard to pending litigation between the city of Bradenton and the Florida Police Benevolent Association, case number two four zero one 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 dash zero two six two seven. The persons attending the meeting will be Mayor Gene Brown, Councilwoman Ward one, Jane Coker, Councilwoman Ward two, Mary Ann Barnaby, Councilman Ward three, Josh Kramer, Councilwoman Ward four, Lisa Gonzalez Moore, Councilwoman Ward five, Pam Coachman, Attorney Sasha Dyson, and a court reporter, Dave Thorbis. The meeting is, is expected to last approximately sixty minutes.
Thank you.
And we'll be in recess. All right, the attorney-client session has ended, and we're now proceeding back to our normal public city council meeting at eleven fourteen AM. Mr. Perry?
Thanks, Mayor. We'd had on the agenda, um, emergency purchases. However, we have not had any submissions of emergency purchases for approval. The statute requires that if there is an emergency purchase, uh, that I sign, that I bring it to the attention of the council at the next council meeting, but there had been no, uh, emergency purchases since the, uh, submitted to me since the last council meeting, so that matters. Move. I just wanna give a quick update on, uh, on where we're at with Hagerty. And as you remember, Hagerty is the FEMA reimbursement consultant that we have retained to ex, ex, help us, basically, with, uh, the entirety of our storm reimbursement efforts. And it's obviously tedious work in this type of, uh, storm season with three different storms, and certain requirements, and certain calamities, and costs associated with each individual storm. And there's different deadlines and rules surrounding those storms, but we had a meeting with, uh, with Hagerty yesterday, and they, their contract with them will, which is, I believe, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, was the initial contract. And when you think about it, um, we've got probably about seven million dollars in, in, uh, debris cleanup costs, maybe a little bit more even, between the two contracts that we use. That's called category A debris removal. We'll have a significant, uh, portion in category B of FEMA compensable cost, which is going to be, uh, protective measures. That'll, that'll be significant, and it'll include payroll and things like that. Both of those categories, the, the, the A on the debris can be a hundred percent reimbursed, if it's all completed in a timely manner, for both storms, within the rules, and the documentation is appropriate. That process, as far as submitting that, is, is an expedited project, it's called. We get fifty percent of the money upfront. Now, there's a hundred percent compensable, but we get fifty percent of it upfront. That's kind of important to record.
I was gonna say, why is that important, Mr. Perry, from past storms?
Yeah, because usually, it can take quite some time to get the full reimbursement from FEMA. There, there are things, believe it or not, you know, Hurricane Sandy that hit the middle, the, the mid-Atlantic section, uh, section of the United States. They're, they're still dealing with FEMA. I, I talked with some people, I think it was Pittsburgh, that was, was telling us, "We still have FEMA claims in," and the like. It, it, it's not uncommon. I mean, generally, it's quicker than that, but, but four, four years isn't particularly out of the question for FEMA to get through everything. And, and sometimes it's a process where you get some of it, um, in payment, and, and, and it's a series of payments that you'll get for reimbursement. So, with these category A and B matters, basically, that's important. We'll then move on to what we call permanent work, which is gonna be the category C through G, things like utility. the category C through G, things like utility, things like roadways, things like parks, and a host of other specified categories as it relates to permanent damage. And one of the things that we had to put in a deadline for it was the permanent damage report. And Hagerty's report was very good. Our paperwork looks really good so far, which is very promising. We'll probably continue with Hagerty with an extended contract because it does, we had to procure that contract on an emergency basis, perhaps the best hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars that we've spent, considering how much is at play. And believe it or not, that's even reimbursable by FEMA, the hundred and eighty-seven. We've also obtained through FDEM, a documentation specialist as well, that was requested by me as a mission during the storm itself, knowing that we were going to be hit with a lot of cost when I was out there at PSOC doing that job. One of the things we requested was a documentation specialist. Kind of strange that they didn't kind of come into the scene until, I don't know, probably a couple, about a month or so ago, yeah, and everything. But we actually requested it during it, speaking with Paul Sedell, who's the FDEM recovery expert from FDEM.
And what does that mean, Mr. Perry, FDEM?
Florida Department of Emergency Management. So you have federal FEMA up top, Florida Department of Emergency Management, county emergency management, and then city emergency management. There's obviously several layers that are integrated into the overall emergency management program and even through the National Incident Management System and ICS Command and Control when you look at operations planning, logistics, and things like that. But on the reimbursement side, you know, it can go through these different channels. The good news is, is that Hagerty says our paperwork is in really good shape. We do have those expedited projects that should return a large portion of the funding. Expedited projects are generally going to be about fifty percent or what your FROC rating is. And your FROC rating, ours is pretty good. It's like fifty-one percent, I think. It goes between forty-nine and fifty-one. So you can go either way. You can go with your FROC rating. If you got a FROC rating at like sixty-
And what is FROC?
Florida Recovery Operations Obligations. Yep, yep. And that's through FDEM, which is Florida Department of Emergency Management, right? And so it really doesn't matter on that. One way or the other, we'll get fifty percent of the money. And that's a good thing. And we would imagine in talking with Hagerty, the other fifty percent, particularly on the categories A and B, will be fairly quickly thereafter. When you say fairly quickly, a year, maybe two, you know, it depends, I guess, on the multitude of what you're including in there. But, you know, again, we will continue with Hagerty. We'll put a contract out for RFP for consulting services for FEMA and other grants. And Hagerty, Hagerty has been very impressive as it relates to not just handling with FEMA, but how it continues on to access other grant opportunities as well, both through FEMA, through other federal agencies and the like. And they have a great deal of expertise in where those grants are, what's required to access them, how to access them, and then how to administer them, I think. And the county has been very, has used Hagerty and has been very impressed from the reports I've gotten. So, you know, expensive as it is when you have a storm season like this and you have these types of things, we don't have full-time staff to have an accounting department with expertise in FEMA recovery. We have some folks that are doing it. Rebecca Dash is one of them, doing awesome job. The individual we hired at Public Works, David Lindsay, has been doing a really good job on compiling, organizing, gathering all of this, submitting it to Hagerty for review, and ultimately through to FEMA for submission. But that's the, that's the cost of an emergency management program and a reimbursement program. And so, you know, we're going to continue on with Hagerty, hopefully. That contract will come to you when it goes to RFP for this as well as expansive services related to both damage from the storm as well as other probably infrastructure opportunities, is the best way to put it.
Any questions of Mr. Perry?
No, but can I make one comment?
Sure.
I just want to kind of reiterate what Mr. Perry said about Rebecca Dash, David Lindsay. I also want to put Cory in there as well.
Absolutely. I'm remiss. I apologize.
But, but, you know, the three of them have really done a phenomenal job for, you know, with mayor and council. And I know for Mr. Perry and myself, we're very proud of the three of them. In addition to that, we have Don Brunner, who has taken on and worked with purchasing to solidify vendors to be able to go out and do some assessments on our properties. And really, it was a, it's been a great team effort. Hagerty's done a great job to help us make sure that, you know, all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. We have the right paperwork in. Just very proud of the team and the work that we've done. And we're definitely ahead of the game. And I would venture to say ahead of, you know, quite a few municipalities and counties that are out there dealing with the same thing. So.
Yeah, that's something. I'll say something that with our whole team, obviously, and I think some of us were up here and obviously all of us were around, but a couple of years ago, it took us nine, ten months to get all of our yard debris picked up. We were done before the end of the year and well within the ninety days for ninety-nine percent of it. You know, I mean, there's still always some one-off stuff, but that's stuff we can get. So I think to our team, you know, to our administration, down to everyone that was involved, you know, it was a great job. I mean, and people, as we know, you know, they forget that last moment. They're looking at, well, now there's still a washer and dryer in front of my house. Well, that's not a washer and dryer from the storm. It's just one that gets out. And I mean, obviously, Councilwoman Moore knows more than anything how many people in her neighborhood still aren't in their house, you know, a lot. So this is not something that's over and it's something that's going to go on for considerable amounts of time. So I just, you know, the public out there looking at it, especially if you weren't affected that much, you know. Everybody was affected a little bit. But if you were affected, you know, and more people were affected from Helene than Milton at the most point of actually being out of your house. And I think that's what people got to remember and look at. So, great job, you know. And I just think that it was a great team effort and the city of Bradenton has a great team all the way around. All right. Anything else, Mr. Perry?
Just briefly, of course, we have legislative delegation meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I believe it's eight-thirty start.
Yes.
And we'll be ready to go with that. What we're going to put an emphasis on is-
Irv.
Is water utility, wastewater.
Yeah. I don't know if he was leaving, but he might need to hear some of my comments.
We've been working on that a lot as far as, you know, I talked a little bit earlier when we were talking about the wastewater treatment facility and expanded treatment and advanced capacity to handle some of these excessive flows that we've had. But Colonel Lee and Brandy and Kim and their staff have put together a pretty good plan that we look to unroll to you guys pretty quick. I apologize. Would have liked to actually had it rolled out previously, like, okay, what could you conclude in the first twenty-five million, so to speak? And what does it, where would you put it? What does it do? How does it work? That kind of thing. What's the ultimate impact of it? And the good news is, the ultimate impact is that it allows us basically to have a much more functioning system for a variety of different reasons. I won't get into a whole lot of detail, but that's what we look at trying to do.
Councilwoman Coker?
Actually, I changed my mind. Save it.
Woman's prerogative.
Yep.
All right. Any department heads before I go to council reports? Anything special? Nothing? All right. We'll start in Ward one.
Yeah. Actually, not much. But a family, a member of our community, one of the things I've always long loved about our community is our deep roots and the multi-generational. And this week, we lost someone and the family has really kept it very quiet. But I did have permission to mention that Fay Boyd did pass away this week. And she's been a longtime community member and on multiple boards. I mean, I could never give you the list, but it's a, it's a big loss. And I just want to extend our thanks to the family for having such a wonderful legacy, leaving us that legacy, and just expressing my condolences. She will be missed. She's one of the Steel Magnolias.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Continuing along that, I think that the last time we got together, I did not realize that these two individuals had passed. One was Kenny Townsend, who actually was an employee of ours for many years and then went to work for Larson Engineering. But he was someone in the community that if you, if you needed a hand, he would lend it to you. And I think he will be deeply missed, as well as Andy Reasoner of the Pioneer Reasoner family. If you like pink grapefruit, you need to thank the Reasoners. And Andy passed away recently and I would just like to remember him and his family. Also, you've got the Manatee County Fair coming up, starting January sixteenth. I have it on pretty good authority that our county fair is, what's the song? Our county fair is the best great fair. Don't miss it. Don't even be late. So remind you that that's happening on the opening day is January sixteenth. And the Bradenton Women's Club, I don't know, Mr. Kramer, or Councilwoman Kramer, Vice Mayor Kramer, if you're going to speak about their fundraiser?
Feel free.
Thank you. The Bradenton Women's Club is doing a fundraiser called, it's a murder mystery dinner called Best Laid Plans. And it is on Saturday, January eighteenth, beginning at six p.m. And tickets are available. You can find them on their website, on their Facebook page. And I'm sure that they would appreciate everybody coming out, buying a ticket. If you like historic old buildings, they are trying to save that historic building that's over a hundred years old. This is one of the ways someone in the community can help them do that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Kramer.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody, from your Vice Mayor. I want to say I'm very happy to have gotten away for a little while during the holidays to go see family, both in Ohio and Maryland, friends in Washington, D.C. And I'm thinking of my family out in California who are close to being under evacuation orders. And their, another home they share with some friends is probably going to be in deep trouble here shortly. So pardon my somber mood, but that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
I have some other things to report on, but I have to bring up something that is going to be uncomfortable. And, but I feel like I have to tell you all. I, I don't know if I'm the only one. I don't think I am. But I was given materials regarding our, the interpretation and implementation of our emergency pay policy. And I will admit that I had incorrectly made some assumptions about that policy and how it was going to be interpreted and also implemented. And I want to really reassure every staff member that I know that you did a lot of work. I saw it. I felt it. And it's, so it's hard for me to criticize something at the same time and, you know, without diminishing my appreciation. But my concern is that because I misunderstood the policy, I just want to make sure that if I was the only one that misunderstood it, that's fine. But if I wasn't the only one, then I think it is a good idea for us to have a meeting so that we can discuss it and make sure that the policy is what we all think that the policy is. And so I've talked to Mr. Perry about this and also Mr. Haring. And I believe that we're, you know, going to be having a meeting that Mr. Haring at this time believes is appropriate to be had in the shade. But I, to the extent that that maybe, you know, maybe Mr. Haring says, no, we're not going to do that or whatnot, I think that we need to have, maybe it's workshop, maybe it's on an agenda, that we more fully flesh out what exactly we intend with the emergency pay policy. After I'd received the materials, I, of course, talked to Mr. Perry and he brought, and, you know, he suggested that we bring in Mr. Haring, which I, of course, always appreciate. My concern, but then I also did ask around about a few other municipalities. And it can be done different ways. We can express our appreciation without the way that the policy is currently drafted, which, I mean, I'll just tell you the things I take exception to are the premium pay without taking into consideration whether the forty-hour work week has been performed. I've heard from other municipalities that sometimes they do it by virtue of accruing time off, which makes total sense to me because after you have been working nonstop twenty-four seven for three weeks, a vacation that's paid seems appropriate. So it's not that I don't want to compensate, and I should specify that I mean like higher level staff. It's not that I don't want to compensate. It's just, I just think that it's fraught with potential issues. And one of which is maybe even that FEMA might interpret our policy to be problematic in some respect, depending on who's doing what kind of work or whatnot. So I, it's council corner. I'm not going to like, you know, go off on a, on a super large tangent, but I would just suggest that we revisit that, unless you all tell me, no, it's, this is what I completely had an expectation of and it's just you, Lisa. But anyways, I just, again, I wanted the staff know that I, it's, I know you all were working hard. And I know that I, you know, I can attest to it. I was there. But it just, this was a surprise to me. And I, I want to make sure that we are purposeful when we're being policymakers.
Okay. Anything else?
I mean, sure, but I feel like that's probably enough for now.
Ms. Coachman?
Oh, God.
Your last.
Not a whole lot. Boy, this has been an interesting morning. I just want to say Happy New Year to everyone. It's our first meeting, actual regular meeting for the year. And boy, oh, boy, did we start off with a bang. I just want to say, I, I'm getting less complaints about debris, which is great. I'm hearing more, though, about homeless camping. And, and one of our parks is being kind of taken over like the previous that we had to, we're going to redesign. And the next thing, I just wanted to ask if anyone else has gotten any inquiries about what we're going to do with the old station two. If you have, then I guess maybe we need to have a discussion because I don't know why. I've been asked that maybe two or three times.
What do you mean?
The fire station.
Fire station.
I'm sorry. I just said station two tonight. Fires, the fire station. I mean, there are people already chomping, I guess, at the bit.
Yeah, that'll be something that'll come up as we get out into the new opportunities, whether it's with the historical society, whether it's with, you know, it's going to have to be come up and it'll have to be surplus first, I guess, probably in a way or, and brought to, yeah.
Still using it right now.
Yeah, yeah. But, but, yeah, that's stuff that'll, as we process into the new one, that'll come up for discussion.
And just one other thing. Because of the hurricanes, the Angola Festival was postponed. And I received recently, or I've seen on Facebook, a flyer saying that the festival will still go on and it'll be March fifteenth and sixteenth. And I'll forward this to Tiffany or someone so that maybe it can be placed on our Facebook page. But I just wanted everyone to know and kind of plan accordingly because the festival will still go on. That's it. War five is alive.
All right. Thank you. Obviously, wish everyone a Happy New Year. Things going on. It's, you know, even though holiday was there, it was kind of a, when you have a Christmas in the middle of the week on a Wednesday and New Year's on a Wednesday, it's a hard two weeks. And one of the things that I know is still coming up is obviously paving and sidewalks and lights on Manatee Avenue. That project was originally slated to be done sometime June, July of this past year with some contractor issues and then storm issues. They got delayed and now it's supposed to, it was originally scheduled now to be done by the end of January. And I think they're still on pace for that. And over the two weeks, from what I, when I talked to the secretary of our district here for- And over the two weeks, from what I, when I talked to the Secretary of our district here for L. K. Nadam, he said, basically asphalt and concrete plants shut down the whole two weeks. So they couldn't do any work when there's no asphalt or concrete. And so that should be gearing back up, and I'm still planning on, they're said, by the end of January, the most parts, you won't have it. And then they will come back and raise the, the manhole covers up, and that's part of the whole project. So all of that's going. Sticking with traffic, I wanna bring up a couple of, of areas that have been addressed to me about stop signs. Four-way stops, three-way stops and that. One of them will be in River Isles, and one of them will be in Village of the Arts. When we, we go through a process that we have a traffic committee, and they look at it, and they look at traffic counts. In some of these areas, the traffic counts maybe at one more, in the morning might meet it, or at night might meet it, but when you look at a twenty-four hour period, it doesn't meet it. But when you look at a safety issue, when you've got, and, and River Isles is like a private neighborhood, you know, it's not, it's not a through street. And their president has been asking for a long time, and I, I just thought it was brought up, and I mean, there is some executive orders we can do, there is some by council vote, that, and I think it was a little bit more prevalent when there was debris there, too. People walking on their streets, and that neighborhood mostly walks, and they were worried about not only some of the neighbors, but also the delivery trucks. As we know, you know, and you won't, I won't pick on one, but FedEx, U. P. S., and Amazon are delivering a lot more day-to-day home products. So those vehicles are on the road, and they're going aggressively in there, and there's no way we can have a police officer sit there twenty-four seven. But that community has asked us to put a stop sign, but it doesn't meet the count number. So I'm asking maybe Councilwoman Moore, it's been the president of their association, been asking for over a year, that if we could get a motion to approve a stop, four-way stop there, and if the council pleasured, and again, it's not to go against the traffic committee, because this is an area that doesn't go through traffic, you know, I mean, it's, and, but, but when you're talking about, you know, I was in there quite a bit with the storm debris in Saul, their neighborhood is a walking community, but they don't feel safe. So, you know, the traffic committee has it, and they're just asking for two stop signs, so have a four-way stop about them. So I don't know how you feel about that.
I do, they have, I do, I, they have also asked me several times, too, for the additional stop signs. And I was deferring to the traffic study mainly because I have a sense, without really having confirmed this, that it's in the realm of possibility that sometimes you can put a stop sign, and it's actually the dangerous thing to do. But if there's no, if there's nothing other than just like it's not needed, then I would hardly support, they have been asking for some time. And I think to your point, it's a fifty-five-plus community, and they would feel safer, and I think sometimes that's worth.
And it's not on a D. O. T. road, it's not, you know, so it's in.
I would love to help them with that.
So, could I get a motion?
Yes, I so move, please.
Is there a second?
You're not seconding?
Consider private roads, and do we have any?
I think they're city right of ways.
I guess, this is happening so quickly, what is the reasoning behind the traffic committee not doing it? Just because they only have that one criteria?
Right, there's not, maybe Mr., Colonel Lee could give a little bit, but there's not enough, you know, when they go over a twenty-four hour period, and Josh may know more about that, too. But, you know, sometimes safety should play into it, not just the number of vehicles.
I, I went through this before, because there were multiple accidents very close to the funeral home on Seventh and Forty-Fifth. That was not a stop, a four-way stop, and there were accidents, but they wouldn't allow it. And I don't know.
And again, we're not trying to supersede it, but if it's not gonna have, the criteria, in my opinion, now, needs to be readjusted.
Yes, sir. Urbanly Public Works Director, the, the warrant, the, the counts that you're talking about, we, we normally justify a, a four-way stop with, with a warrant, based on the, the, not, the amount of traffic. Because what we, what we're talking about here, what we're trying to avoid is those geometric accidents, which, which can, you know, getting somebody T-boned can, can be, e- even at relatively low speeds, can, can, and say, even in a fifty-five-plus community, it's the pedestrian traffic, I believe that's the, the challenge here, not necessarily the vehicular element. So, a- a- again, if, if that is your desire, you know, the, the committee, I, I'm pretty sure has already evaluated this, and this was a traffic safety committee, not just Public Works Transportation folks, but it's the full spectrum of public safety professionals in the city, and they've looked at it. And their decision was that there wasn't a, a warrant, that the, the, the traffic and the orientation of that particular intersection didn't warrant the highest form of traffic control that we can offer, which is a stop sign.
Well, and, and again, I think that they look at the numbers, and talking to some of those members, they felt that it did, but it didn't meet the numbers, so they were going by their criteria. So I, I hope, you know, and again, this is not to, to make, you know, unsafe, it's to make the people that live there feel safe. And obviously, they gotta have education, too, if they're, you know, don't cross just 'cause there's a stop sign. You know, you gotta look at making sure that delivery truck is stopping at that stop sign. And, and one of the other ones that we did, we almost had a police officer killed, and I've heard no complaints, only compliments about the four-way stop we put at, by Manatee High School, and the safety of the children.
The three Es? Engineering, enforcement, and education. So those are the things that, that, again, if, if your direction to your Public Works Department is to, you know, to put a four-way stop in there, if that's your pleasure, then give us the necessary direction. And, and, of course, we'll make that happen. Again, just so you understand the rationale that.
No, we're not, we're not questioning that it wasn't, but I just think the number count has become so overwhelming that that might not be the only reason.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
With regards particularly to River Isles and Braden River Lakes, I can remember when there were not traffic lights on Manatee Avenue, State Road sixty-four, because F. D. O. T. kept saying, it doesn't meet the numbers, it doesn't meet the numbers. And we had fatal accident after fatal accident after fatal accident at both of those places. To the point, my first year on the N. P. O., I asked the District Secretary point blank, how many people do we have to get killed there before we get a light? I understand that we have, we have criteria, we have numbers, we have all of this scientific stuff that can tell us how things go. However, I get very frustrated when citizens come to me and say, please help us. This road's a drag strip, or, and, and forgive me, and I'm not picking on FedEx or U. P. S., but they use my street as a cut-through from Manatee Avenue to get, and they, they have so many packages they have to deliver within an hour to, to keep their jobs. And they go down my street like a house of fire, and I can see how that could be very disconcerting. I mean, I have to laugh, everybody, every time somebody says, it's a fifty-five and older community, and I remember thinking, oh, I'd never live in one of those. Well, I could now. I qualify. And as they get, as people get older, they don't move as quickly, and the reaction time's getting out of the way of something, don't say it. So, yeah, I know, he, he leaned over and whispered something to the Vice Mayor and, and. Now, all I'm saying is, is I appreciate that we have the Safety Committee, I appreciate them for what they do. Sometimes I think they feel their hands are tied, because if it doesn't, if, if this is the slot, and what they have to work with doesn't fit right in that slot, they feel like they can't override it and say, but we think with human nature, it, it's a safer choice.
I think that was kind of my point, is maybe we need to take a look at the policy or the criteria. I don't necessarily like willy-nilly, the person that's, that barks the loudest, has the, the ear of counsel, or whatever. I, I like keeping those decisions at that level, but maybe we need to have a way where public safety is moved up in, in criteria, you know, in terms of importance. I don't know, but, and, and I don't have any problem with giving them a, a four-way stop. I just, I just don't have a lot of knowledge of it, and, and so I'm just doing it because somebody asked, you know.
Vice Mayor Kramer?
Colonel Lee, the Traffic Safety Council still deals with county-wide issues, right? They're not just city-related. I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna corner you into that, but I'm pretty confident that's primarily. Yeah, I mean, we have people representatives, but I'm pretty sure we have some of the orders county-wide. I would say, not necessarily this one, 'cause I don't think a lot of people are cutting through River Isles, but to sort of echo your comments, technology, in a lot of ways, is changing how we get around. And I know if I have any appointments southeast of here, especially during rush hour, the route it's telling me to go is down Fourteenth Street and cut down Thirteenth Avenue through Village of the Arts. Well, when I leave school at Manatee and Forty, Thirty-Ninth, it's telling me to cut down Seventh Avenue as soon as I can, basically, to avoid the backup at Fifteenth. So, a lot of these surface streets that weren't main arteries are becoming main arteries now. And I think some of that, we can't, we can't necessarily wait for counts to rise, or whatever. So I do understand, I understand the position you're in, fully, and your staff are in, that sit on those, not you, but your staff are in, sitting on those councils.
The liability issues and the things that come up from insurance companies and the, the folks who, who have to indemnify, you, you know, the, 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 the patterns that result, they're the ones who, who, again, would, would come back. And, and why those criteria are established is a result of those kinds of activities. You know, hey, you, you've gotta match the, the system that you have with the, the willingness or the ability to, to, again, protect slash support those who, who wind up on the opposite side of that, who, who wind up in one of those accidents.
Who has run a stop sign and caused an accident.
Or has been injured as a result. So, so those, those.
But injured because somebody ran a stop sign. Mr. Rudicel, what is your opinion on stop signs and people running them? Us being sued because somebody ran a stop sign and caused an accident.
Well, I mean, generally, the council is protected by immunity when it makes a planning-level decision on things like this. But, at the same time, you do wanna have your professional support when you make a decision on a traffic control device. So, in this instance, it sounds like, and, and maybe what we need to do is, is just have some information to confirm this, but it sounds like the, the proposed stop was not approved because it didn't meet the, the warrants. But it's not gonna create safety issues, and I guess maybe that's the question that goes back to the committee. Is, is, is there a concern about, is there a safety concern about putting a stop sign there, even though it doesn't meet the warrants?
And, and again, if it is your decision for us to, to do just that, to go counter to, to the criteria or what the committee recommended, that's, that's.
We have a neighborhood that's been asking us for a stop sign for a couple of years. Somebody gets run over because we didn't put a stop sign there, are we liable that way?
No, again, planning-level functions like that are, the, the city council has immunity from those types of decisions.
Mr. Perry, Mr. Perry?
I, I agree with Scott, but, you know, generally speaking, for, for roads liability, and, and really what you look at is, is the Traffic Engineering Manual, the TEM, it's called. F. D. O. T. has a TEM, the county probably has a TEM, we have a TEM, a lot of places have it. And it's, it, it's a guideline, that, that's all it is, is a guideline that looks at the best design from the perspective of traffic safety, pedestrian safety, roadway safety, and things like that. There's certain things that are more hard and fast in the TEMs about where you basically would create congestion by putting too many signalized intersections in front of one or the other, and things like that. What Colonel Lee was talking about is the other consideration is, there is about liability. Generally speaking, under tort claim practices against government, negligent design, construction, operation, and maintenance are the four categories where you can pierce the veil to, to the liability protections that are provided under sovereign immunity. And so, when you have something like this, and you build to the standard, you're in better shape because you went through the planning standard. But that's not to say you can't do what, what, what you're requesting, particularly in certain areas. And so, I, I think quite frankly, you know, when you're looking at something like River Isles, i- i- it doesn't pose that much of a risk, would be my opinion. When you start to get into more complicated, congested, high-speed, a lot of traffic-type of collision activity, pedestrian injury areas, and you start tinkering outside that book, you're running a bigger risk of that. That would be my two cents, and I have done some defense on that side of the negligent operation maintenance.
You know, and, and I go back to looking at, obviously, New Year's Day in New Orleans. You know, they had opportunity to do something and didn't. We have an opportunity to do something, and I'm not comparing that, that's terrible tragedy there, but this is a smaller opportunity that, and I'm gonna bring up another one also, that may get more scrutiny than this one, but, you know, I saw it. And I've seen it in thirty-six years as a funeral director, of when maybe something could have happened, and somebody could have been proactive, but because it didn't meet the traffic counts, you know, and how many people have to get hurt or die before that, including one of our officers that got T-boned, that if it would have been a four-way stop, he would have been doing, he was doing right, and somebody ran a stop sign, but maybe if he'd have been stopping at the other stop sign, it might, you know, and again, that wouldn't, we can do a lot of what-ifs. But I think we've beat this one as much as we could. So we have a motion to approve with the, the stop sign at the, I don't have the exact street, cross-street, but I know the traffic.
We're being asked to make a decision, and I don't have any idea about, about this place, where it's at. What the situation is, and so that's what, that's my problem with the way this is going. Is to do something like this, and I don't have.
Right, but it's, it's a four-way, adding us two stop signs on River Isles Boulevard at.
Oakleaf, I think.
Oakleaf, Oakleaf. So their neighborhood has a four-way stop, and it's where you turn to go to their clubhouse, and it's.
I know, I think, I think that the issue, and I appreciate your data, I think that the issue is, if I could just like sum it up, is normally, the committee would have done this study to determine how much traffic was there, and whether they had to, whether they had a safety issue that had to be mitigated by placing a four-way stop sign there. The counts don't warrant that, and I think the competing interest outside of any other safety issue, you know, like is, does it obscure some vision or something like that, that if it created that, okay, that's a no-brainer, we stick with the counts, you know? But outside of that, the other consideration is creating traffic congestion and creating other traffic-type problems. This community, because the, just the nature of the community is such, that they're not complaining about traffic. They're, they are, they are concerned about the, the rate of speed, and I think that really what they're asking for is to be able to lock eyes with the driver before they start to make that, that crossing. And so if the committee is telling me that there's no safety issue with putting the stop sign there, then yes, this community would very much like to see a stop sign there.
Have they done that? Have they told us that there's no?
The only, only thing that I got after two times. The only, only thing that I got after two times, they've looked at it twice, was it doesn't meet the traffic count.
I don't have the data in front of me, but I, I, anecdotally, I've been told that, yes, this is, when I, I went over, visited River Isles right before the holidays, and I was warned going in there that, yes, they had had a, two times, a couple of times, they had asked for a four-way stop, and it, and it did not meet one.
I just would ask in the future, if we're going to be asked to make a decision, so I would know about it, I could drive by it or have some information about it, that's, that's all I'm saying, if we're, because we're going to have, this won't be the last one, I'm sure.
Oh, we could put a roundabout there.
Again, and you bring up, ma'am, you bring up a great point, there are more options out there for traffic control than just a stop sign. What I, what I mentioned to you, a, a stop sign is the highest form of traffic control, because you bring everyone to a stop.
And probably the least expensive at the moment, because roundabout would be a little bit more expensive.
My business is maintenance, whatever is out there, I've got to just be able to sustain and maintain it, and ensure that, that.
Take a level when we put it up.
So I will, I will act at your pleasure.
All right, so we have a motion and a second?
Do we have a second?
Yes, Mrs. Coachman seconded it, and we've had numerous discussions, so I'll start the vote in Ward 1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
3.
Yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
Approved 5 to 0. Now, I'm going to bring up another one that I, you know, I'm not as passionate about at the moment, but I think it's something that we need to figure out. At the middle of December, I was invited to Village of the Arts to be Mr. Claus, and we had Mrs. Claus with us, and we sat at a residence on the corner of, is that 12th, or is that 12th and 13th, 12th Street and 13th Avenue, which lines up directly with the CRA's property entrance to the temporary parking that you're allowing them to have. So, we are parking everyone there with the City of Bradenton and CRA, and that is start of the South Village, basically, and they're all, there's not much to do in the South Village, everybody's coming to the North Village. On 13th Avenue, between Tamiami Trail and 9th Street, we allow parking on the north side of the road. So, going west, if you're facing west, you park on the north side of the road. The cars that were coming down that road, which now becomes basically a one-lane road, so they're having to zig in and zag out and do all of that, and I probably saw, and there wasn't a lot of people there that day, which is unfortunate though, but I probably saw sitting there half a dozen times where people started to cross the road because they couldn't see the, around the cars that were parked on the side of the road, and it was like, "Wait, wait, wait, wait." And, because cars are coming on each other in a single lane around that, and I don't know, so I don't know if I'm asking today, or I'm asking for a deep dive, should we not allow cars to park on that road? Should we put a three-way stop there? And that may be more of a, a safety study, and I would like a report back to this board quickly about what is an opportunity to do for that, because it's scary there, and people are taking advantage of, like Mr. Vice Mayor Kramer said, getting off 9th when the traffic's there, getting off Tamiami Trail, and using 13th Avenue as a cut-through. Now you say, "Oh, well, they're using 17th as a cut-through too," but 17th doesn't have a walking village in it.
And it doesn't have on-street parking, like designated as such.
And it doesn't have on-street parking, so I think that, I mean, an easy solution to me, just watching it, is a, a three-way stop, because it'll stop people, and they'll decide either not to go there, or at least they'll have to stop and let the people be able to see and walk. But, or, how do you tell that community they can't park on that street anymore? That's a harder thing to do. Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was numerous times when I would go to lunch at Bird Rock Taco when Mr. Shiplet had Bird Rock open, and even with the people parking on the street, because conventional wisdom is, is if you allow people to park on the street, cars are supposedly supposed to slow down and be a little more careful, oh no, they would go zooming down that street, and, and at art walks in the evening, because there's no crosswalk there, that would, that was even worse. So, I agree with you, I think something needs to be done. I think I would like to have something come back to say, a, a three-way stop with one of, a functioning crosswalk. I think that that is something that, that we ought to look at. We've talked, and I, I seem to remember, Ms. Coachman, Ms. Coker, you might have been there, Mr. Kramer, I'm not sure, but, the village came in and talked to us about the possibility of doing some sort of design there on the street so that it would look like a speed table, similar to what we did over by Westminster Manor on 21st, because they thought it would, you know, would look artistic, it would fit in, and it would slow people down. I'm not even sure that's going to work anymore from what I have seen recently. And I would recommend that we get a project brought forward to us that says, "This is what we think's going to happen here," because if you, again, you put, you can put a, a speed trailer out there, you're not going to, I don't think you'd get the true picture of that street at that time, because it's, I mean, do you remember when we were cleaning up over there? And somebody went by, and I was like, "Please slow down," lots of people, and they're like, "I'm not going to do what they did to me." So.
Mr. Kramer, did you have any questions on that? Or do you, it's your ward, so I want to make sure we're going forward.
I think we've talked about apples and apples, just different types of apples. River Isles is a different apple than, or I guess we should say oranges here, right? Than Village of the Arts, but I would agree, Village of the Arts is a very walkable community as well, especially with a lot of visitors that come on certain dates. We would want that to be as safe as possible, but I think, according to what Mrs. Barnaby said, I agree that a further study would be needed.
But, quickly.
Yes.
You know, again, because I think we can wait, and now that we've talked about it, God forbid something would happen, and, you know, again, I saw it, I mean, it was my, I got a pit in my stomach, and the people were right, but a car, there was a car going east, and the other car went, was going, no, this car was going west, and the other car coming east went up on the sidewalk to go around them. Well, the people thought they had the right of way because the car had passed, they didn't see the other one, and then, right or wrong, we went and got two cones, Mr. and Mrs. Claus got two cones and put in the road, so people were having to slow down, you know, because again, that's the last thing I want to see. I've seen that once in my life, somebody get hit by a car when I was 12 years old, and a little 10-year-old boy got killed, and, I mean, it still makes me sick, you know, that it was the little boy's fault, he ran out in front of a car, but, but, you know, it was, it was terrible, and I mean, we've all seen other things, and I'm, and I don't want to go to the drama, but those are the things that you just, if we can do something that makes it safer, and then accidents are still going to happen. So I brought up a lot, just Happy New Year to everybody, and I think there's some things we're going to keep going through, so we can bring that back. We got a meeting, when, on the 22nd?
Okay, so, so what I'm, I understand you, the, your Traffic Safety Committee will do a study, typically, we, it's, the studies are a week long.
I'd like them to address it, and if they need to come to us and tell us why, what, when, or how, that can be done, because we know we're not a city of speed bumps, and unless we vote up here to change that, and I'm not, I'm not ready to propose that, but in some areas, the county is putting them all over now, you know?
Yeah, but the county doesn't have their own fire department that costs a million dollars, a fire truck.
Right, so that, that was been our, one of our things, so if we can do some of our traffic control, and in the right way, you know, I think the one we did approve today was the right way for them, but this is, this is more of a, a regional traffic, or is that the right term? A local, local.
That's going to affect connectivity and, yeah.
But again, a stop sign shouldn't make you not be able to go that way, it should make you obey the laws.
But circles are better. Circles are better.
But it's difficult to put traffic circles in residential neighborhoods.
All right, but thank you very much, that's all I have. Anybody else for the good of the whole?
I just want to just say this, I think we have numerous areas in the city, especially in some of our older neighborhoods, and, for example, I'm on 3rd Street between 13th Ave and, and MLK, when 301 is backed up, people are flying through there, and I cringe every day because my neighbor's little girls ride their bikes on the little narrow sidewalk, and, and one of them has fallen into the street, but fortunately, a car didn't, you know, wasn't coming as quickly as they do, and it's every day. I keep telling their dad, "When the park is redesigned, we'll make sure there's something for them to ride safely because it's extremely dangerous." I think we have numerous, because I get calls a lot.
Well, and then that would not probably meet a traffic count study, but is there a way to come up with?
Is there a way to mitigate?
Mitigate a safety study there, because a stop sign, there's enough space between 13th and MLK, put a stop sign halfway in between somewhere, and, and make it.
Trying to figure that out.
I'm saying, and that, and that, and again, we're trying to mitigate some of the neighborhoods, the kids, and, and if we go by engineering rules only, we would have, we might not still even have it River Isles, Mrs. Barnaby, a stop sign.
You might not, I mean, it was, yeah.
Because it doesn't meet the traffic count, and, and unfortunately, and again, this isn't trying to pigeonhole our engineering into a certain situation, but sometimes those rules need to be looked at and made common sense about. Anyway, I could keep going on that, but, and I'm just going to say one last thing, on Cortez Road between 26th Street and Tamiami Trail, I keep saying Tamiami, Tamiami Trail, all of those stop signs, or all of those crosswalks. I saw within an inch of each other the other night, the person had pushed it, the lights were red, the person was going, and I'm screaming in the car, "No, no, no, no," because the cars aren't stopping. So they're not stopping, they go right through the red light when they're, so, you know, those are the things that, as pedestrians, you've got to watch even though it's there. So, it's also a pedestrian responsibility, and, and then all the other ones that just don't even go in the crosswalk. Anyway, so, nothing else for the good of the whole? We'll be adjourned, thank you.